Okay, I will call to order our Murray City Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, February 3rd, 2022. It is 6:30 PM. Present this evening, we have Commissioners Travis Nay, Jake Pearson, Ned Harker, Jeremy Lowry. I am Mary Ann Patterson, I'm the Chair. And, excuse, is Lisa Malkovich from staff. We have Jared Hall, Zach Smallwood, Susan Nixon, Bryant Farnsworth, and Danny Astle. We like to welcome the public who is here in attendance. We are always grateful to have you participating in our meetings. Some etiquette items to review. We ask that you take a moment to silence your cellphones, and if you need to take a call, please step out into the hallway. When the time comes, you will be able to make a comment on an agenda item at the podium when we open the public comment portion. And we ask that you state your name and address for the record, and that you keep your comment to three minutes. So we will start with our business items. Approval of the January 6th, 2022 minutes. Have the Commissioners had opportunity to review those?
Yes.
Are there any changes or corrections?
No.
Or is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the planning, Murray City Planning Commission meeting minutes from January 6th, 2022, as written with a few editorial comments that we had during our pre-meeting.
Yes, perfect. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved. Agenda item number two, conflict of interest. Do any of the Commissioners have a conflict of interest with the agenda items this evening?
No.
No, neither do I. Approval of our findings of facts. We have a conditional use permit for Riley Lane Offices and Infinity Custom Countertops. Do the Commissioners have an opportunity to review the findings of facts and conclusions?
Yes.
Any changes, corrections, or a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve the findings of facts for the project Infinity Custom Countertops and for the project Riley Lane Office Warehouse and Contractor.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those pass. So let's move on to conditional use permit for Murray Square Commercial Center. Is applicant here this evening? All right, we'll have our staff report by Jared Hall.
Thank you. This is continued from the previous meeting. Well, actually, from a previous, previous meeting because we had to cancel for the lack of a quorum, but these are for, these are design reviews and conditional use permits for two different commercial buildings in the commercial phase at Murray Square. Again, this is the, this is the property mixed-use development where the 421 apartments in total, apartment homes, and then about 21,000 square feet of commercial. And these buildings, these two buildings that we're going to look at will be the first two parts of the commercial phase. The commercial phase will happen throughout while the residential phases are being built. Again, this is MCMU zoning. It was MU at the time that it was rezoned and approved, so the process is much the same. We're trying to make sure that these commercial buildings meet the intent of the memorandum of understanding that governed the project and how it's developed and how it's phased, and also that they meet the intent of the site plan, the master site plan. When it was first seen by the Commission, and I'm just going to go through it real briefly, when the Commission first reviewed this item, the concern was that we had neglected to include some of the pedestrian connections that had been part of that master site plan. So you asked him at the time, Justin Kimball, the applicants, to go back and reintroduce that connection and do better with that. That's been done. In staff's, in staff's view, I'm going to just briefly show you real quickly. This is the north pedestrian connection from the apartment portion of it, the residential portion of the project, leading out into the commercial phase. This is building one. And then this is the connection that was missing from the previous plan, a good strong connection all the way out through the commercial phase and out to 900 East as well, from the main entrance and exit of the apartments, the largest of the residential buildings right here. Just to show you a little more in detail, this is kind of the central feature area where they can bring the food trucks in. There's connections for, for those trucks to be in that area and kind of make a nice complement to the commercial building that's planned for phase or for building one. There is a drive-through on the north side. That's been handled here. One of the nice touches that I think they've reintroduced is using that paver crosswalk where it crosses the, the drive-through area, so there's a good, strong visibility for those pedestrians. And then that's a good, a good, strong pedestrian connection. And then this we'll see on the other building site as well, but this is the best central connection for all of it, and it's been done with that same eight-foot wide pavers, raised pavers to be used, so it's a good, strong pedestrian element. About 4,800 square feet of retail here, potential for several units. One of the units will definitely have that drive-through window there. Just to show you real quickly, just as a reminder, because this was reviewed before and wasn't one of the concerns, but this is a right-in, right-out only access at the north end of the property to kind of control traffic situations on 900 East. Building four, the other end of the commercial phase, has a drive-through as well, and again, those raised pavers for crosswalks there and that good, strong eight-foot wide paver connection all the way from 9th East down through the commercial phase and onto the residential part of the project. We're very happy with that. And then again, too, these crosswalks have been placed around the roundabout so that you can get from this current residential phase and the commercial phase and onto the future residential phase, which is just across that main access that comes into and out of that neighborhood on the west that we have to keep open, that's part of that MOU as well. So it's good that these crosswalks are back in around the roundabout because we do want people to be able to move from that new residential phase that'll happen after these other things. The final 121 units, I think, probably are right in this building here that'll go up And landscaping, again, managed to do these, these pedestrian connections and only lose a couple of the parking spaces that had been shown before. Again, we had more parking than we needed on this site for these than we require, so we weren't too concerned with that. The landscaping that's been proposed is appropriate and really nice around those areas. That'll be a good, that's a good addition to that pedestrian activity as well for both of those buildings. We are, under these findings, recommending approval with these four findings, that it does meet the intent of that master site plan and the tenants of the MOU. And our recommendation is that you approve. We did modify these conditions that are listed to reflect that they've put the pedestrian connections back in, that they'll just be installed per this plan. So, you have any questions for staff?
I do have a question. Can we go back a couple slides where we showed that main pedestrian connection? Can you explain to me how that's working with the landscape islands?
That's a good question. So, and it's not in this, but in one of the previous, I don't know if I have it in this, but you can't see it very well here, but there are wells for trees in that, so it does work with the landscaping.
Okay.
It doesn't show very well in this site plan.
It does not show very well on the site plan.
In the, in the modified landscaping plans, you can see that they've got places for trees to grow up in that. That's all they can really do with it crossing because it is going to be raised pavers. So, yeah. Good question, though. Anything else? Thank you.
All right. If we could have the applicant come up and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Justin Kimball, 1,000 South Main Street, Suite 104, Salt Lake City, Utah 4111.
Thanks for being here. And have you had an opportunity to review the conditions?
I have.
And you'll be able to comply with those?
We will.
Great. I just, is there anything else you want to share with the Commission?
Probably just to apologize that that, that wasn't intentionally omitted from, from the previous site plan. Our civil engineers swapped the two buildings, and it was just an omission. We were always planning on doing them, but should have had our architect reviewed a little closer versus just our civil engineer. So, lesson learned because it cost all of us a month of time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, and I do want to commend you. I really do love the raised, the raised pavers and the connections that you've made, and I think that's going to be a really, really good addition. So, any other questions from the Commission? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open this agenda item for a public comment. If there's anyone that would like to come to the podium and state their name and address to make a comment. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to the Commission for discussion or a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission grant design review and conditional use permit approval for the application to allow the construction of proposed buildings one and four of the commercial phase of the Murray Square, mixed-use development on the property located at 4652 and 4678 South 900 East, subject to conditions one through 10.
I think one through eight. It was changed in this.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Perfect, thank you. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Nay to grant design review and conditional use permit approval for the application to allow construction of proposed buildings one and four on the commercial phase of the Murray Square mixed-use development on the property located 4652 and 4678 South 9th East, subject to the eight conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we can take a vote.
Mr. Nay.
Yes.
Mr. Lowry.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, motion passes. Good luck with your project.
It looks like you're making great progress on it, by the way.
Yeah, that's exciting. Okay, agenda item number five, Clean, let's see, Clean Start Intermountain. Is applicant here? Okay, great. We will have our presentation first.
This application for Clean Start Intermountain Chemical Manufacturing of Cleaning Products is located at 6563 South Cottonwood Street. Property is located in our manufacturing zone. You can see the aerial there. It's on the east side of Cottonwood Street in our MG zone. The prop, the building was originally built in the 1990s, and the building is approximately 22,280 square feet total. It was originally built for office warehouse and has been continued with those uses, but the land use category 2840 is one that is allowed under a conditional use for chemically treated products. The applicant has indicated, applicant is JP Francia, and he's indicated that how this works, and if you have technical questions, I'm going to refer to him, but basically it's electro, electrochemically activated water and soda ash mixed in an electric water generator machine, very simple production. And he has submitted the MSDS material safety data sheets to us, and our fire marshal has reviewed those, and they are okay with that. It apparently is odorless and colorless and has no side effects on skin or eyes, and he can give you more information on it if you would like, and actually can be discharged into our drain, municipal drain system if it's diluted somewhat and decrease the pH level. The floor plan ish does have a couple of office, offices and a kitchen and a open reception area and restroom. The rest of the balance of the space is just over 2,200 square feet for the actual warehouse area with an overhead door at the back of the space. So here's some photos of the building. The front's on Cottonwood Street. We have the front view, the back view, side view, and rear. In 1997, the Board of Adjustments granted a variance for the requirement for a buffer fence at the rear of the property. It is adjacent technically to residential area, but the track's actually, is between the two. So it did receive the two variants, this one for the requirement for a solid fence, solid wall. They allowed, they were allowed to have the chain link fence, and then another variant that required, reduce the landscaping from 10 feet to five feet. However, you can see in the lower right photo there that they do have some trees, and it actually looks really nice that they have installed and maintain the landscaping. Same with along the front of the building, they actually have more shrubs and trees than are required by our code. So it's meets the code as far as that goes. And here's just a photo of their machine, simple, not, not large, quite small. And we are recommending approval for this application, subject to the following seven conditions. We did send out notices to the surrounding residence businesses, 25. We did receive one inquiry from one of the adjacent property owners, and I sent him the information on the MSDS sheets, and he was not concerned. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. If we could have the applicant come forward and state your name and address for the record.
John Pierre Francia, 6563 South Cottonwood, Murray, 84107.
Great, thank you for being here. Have you had an opportunity to review the conditions of approval?
I have. I just had one question.
Yeah.
On number three, the backflow preventer. The only thing connected to the water system is a soft water machine that provides soft water to our, our electrical system. So I'm not sure where I'm supposed to put a backflow preventer because there's no, nothing going back into the system. The soft water system's already designed with that kind of, they're not going to allow anything back in the system, so I'm not sure what I'm supposed to connect it to.
Okay, yeah, I don't.
Just real quickly, I'll be, I'll be super fast. I would leave the condition in place and let them work that out with the water sewer department, water department, and they can tell them where they would need to connect it.
Right, and probably they'll do an inspection and see what your system is and if it meets the guidelines.
We're familiar with, and I'm, we used to be in the restaurant industry, so I always had backflow preventers on everything. This case, I'm like, okay, totally cool with doing it, but I'm not sure what I'm supposed to put it on.
Right, yeah, and, and they'll come and inspect it, so I'm sure that you can work with them when they're looking at what your system is and how it will work. So, and if you do have further questions, yeah, you can reach out to staff and get that worked out. Okay? But you'll be able to comply with those conditions?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, great. Is there any other information you'd like to give the Commission?
Just, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of a showman, I'm like, so give me two seconds, I just want to explain what these are. That machine she showed you, right, does it go back? Here we go. So, that machine, the other one, the gray one in the background, is basically an electrolysis machine. So HOCL, which is nature's great surface disinfectant, we're EPA registered, we're hospital-grade, we kill everything that needs to be killed except people and pets, so it kills MRSA, staph, Clostridium difficile, E. coli, kills it all, okay? But it is, you wouldn't do that with other chemicals that kill things. This is the same thing your white blood cells make. So every human, every mammal makes HOCL at a certain level. We just have a machine that makes lots of it. We manufacture currently in South Carolina and in Oklahoma, and we put this small facility here, but this will grow over time as we develop this market. We just wanted something that was a little further west as we start to grow out the rest of our market. The same machine, when you run the process with soda ash instead of highly purified salt, gives you NaOH, which is sodium hydroxide. This is nature's great, great cleaner-degreaser. Like this will kick the crap out of like Fantastic or Lysol or any of those things, and it's natural. I could do the same spray my face thing, and you'd be like, oh, don't, but it's a great product.
Yeah, don't.
We make a hand sanitizer concentrate, so I can ship a 3.2 ounce bottle anywhere in the world that makes a gallon from tap water or, or river water, and it is alcohol-free, it has no smell, no residue. I think I gave you guys some, it's pretty great, right? Lasts on your hands for three hours, so no alcohol, doesn't dry your hands out, and it's actually registered as wound care. So we have some really cool products. I'm excited we're in Salt Lake. Originally, when they said, no, you can't go in business, you gotta do this process, I was frustrated. I was like, wait, we make super safe stuff, I want to sell to you guys super cheap and save you a ton of money on all your stuff. Let's go, let's go. And then I realized what the process is like. So I really appreciate it now, I appreciate the time and preparation that's gone into it, so thank you for, you know, because I recognize somebody else might have a chemical that's really nasty and scary, and you gotta do your homework to make sure, so.
Great, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
All right, we will open this item up for a public comment. If there's anyone that would like to come and, and make a comment for this. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and bring it back for a motion or discussion.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that Planning Commission approve conditional use permit for Clean Start Intermountain to allow manufacturing and distribution of cleaning products at the property, address 6563 South Cottonwood Street, subject to conditions one through seven.
Okay, I have a motion to approve a conditional use permit for Clean Start Intermountain to allow manufacturing and distribution of cleaning products at the property, address 6563 South Cottonwood Street, subject to the seven conditions. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Low, or sorry, Commissioner Pearson. All right, we can take a vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. So motion is approved, congratulations, and good luck with your business. All right.
Yeah, yeah.
Agenda item number six, is applicant here tonight for the flag? Okay, great, thank you.
Perfect. So, yeah, this is item number six. It is the Lynn Scott subdivision, a request for a flag lot subdivision at 1714 East Vine Street. You can see it's located here, just west of, I don't know why I do these things to myself, I don't know the first word, so something Haven Drive. So then it's, New Haven, there we go. You never know, Gold Haven, New Haven, it's some sort of haven. So, yeah, it's just west of that. It's a 1.27 acre lot. It is in the R110 zone. The land use ordinance allows for flag lot subdivisions in the R110 zone, subject to just going through the sub, normal subdivision process and a little bit of extra, extra that you have to do to get a flag lot. So I have provided the proposed flag lot here, so one of the requirements for that is that they have a 28-foot access easement with four feet on either side being landscaping and 20 feet being asphalt, so that makes up that 28 feet. The front lot has to meet the minimum standards for a lot in the underlying zone, so for an R110 zone, actually, we'll get to that here. So the underlying requirement for area is 10,000 square feet. They've provided 22,596 square feet. The flag lot is required to have a minimum of 12,500 square feet without the STEM included in that calculation. They've provided 32,734 square feet, that's with the STEM. Without the STEM, they're at 27,078 square feet, so still way over the requirement, over double. So they would be subject to the same setbackses of the underlying zone, so 25-foot front and rear setbacks, a minimum of eight for a total of 20 on both sides, and a 35-foot maximum height limitation there. So this is pretty straightforward. We did send out 74 notices. I received two emails that I addressed with, with, with those people. We haven't received any phone calls or anything since that time. So we are recommending that the Planning Commission grant preliminary and final subdivision approval for the Lynn Scott subdivision. Any questions I can answer at this point?
I have one, just more because I'm curious.
Sure.
The setback, the 25-foot setback, when they're building next to the road for the flag lot, does the road count as part of the 25 feet, or do they have to be 25 feet from the?
25 feet.
Flag road, whatever that called, I don't know what that's called, the road for the flag lot.
Oh, so it's from that front setback, so the, so, let's see, this is their front lot line.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, the side yard setback.
Oh, side yard setback? This is their side yard, so it would just be, yeah, so the STEM is really just an access drive. So really, you could kind of see this as like the start of their property, so they would be a minimum of eight or eight and 10 and 12 on, on the two sites.
For lot 2A, do they have a side yard setback on the right side? I don't know.
Yes, they would, yes, sorry. Yeah, so.
Okay, so that's where the dotted line is.
Yeah, well, that's actually a, a public utility easement.
I see.
But, but yes, so we've, we've done a couple different flag lot subdivisions in the past because we allow them the option of, they can either include the STEM in this property or they can grant, this property can grant an easement for access along this property. So if they don't have enough room to allow for that 28-foot access as, as attached to the, to the flag lot, we sometimes go the avenue of, well, you can include that 28-foot access easement, and that would be included in your side yard setback.
Okay.
But, yeah. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If we could have the applicant come up and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Lance Lynn Scott, address is 5978 Monaco Circle, Murray, Utah 84121.
And have you had a chance to review the conditions?
I have.
And you'll be able to comply with those?
Yes.
Great. Is there any other information you'd like to give the Commission?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll open the public meeting or public comment portion of the meeting for this agenda item. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and bring it back for a motion or discussion.
Just general discussion, I'll mention that this is going to happen on several more pieces of property in this area, as they reeb do Vine Street along here, is a lot of the older homes the owners pass on. I think we're going to continue to see these types of applications come forward.
I'll make a motion, I guess, too. I will make a motion, the Planning Commission grant preliminary and final subdivision approval for a flag lot subdivision on the proposed Lynn Scott Flag Lot subdivision located at 1714 East Vine Street, subject to conditions one through eight.
Okay, I have a motion to grant preliminary and final subdivision approval for the flag lot subdivision and proposed Lynn Scott Flag Lot subdivision located at 1714 East Vine Street, subject to the eight conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. We can take a vote.
Perfect. Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Harker?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes. So motion is approved, and good luck with your project. Thanks for being here tonight. All right, our last agenda item, election of Chair and Vice Chair for 2022.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please do.
I'd like to make a motion that Jake Pearson be nominated for Chair and Jeremy Lowry be nominated for Vice Chair.
I thought we agreed that Lisa.
He didn't have the guts to do it. Uh, okay, is there a discussion on that motion?
Sounds like a bad idea.
I think we should talk about our serious lack of responsibility.
We have to do two, so we have to do a motion for Chair.
Okay. First.
I'll do motion.
I'd like to, never mind.
I'd make a motion for Jeremy Lowry's Chair.
Jeremy Lowry's Chair?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion to nominate Jeremy Lowry as Chair. Was there a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's a motion by Commissioner Nay and a second by Commissioner Pearson.
I thought we'd become friends a little bit.
He's making enemies now.
Fastest I ever seconded in a motion.
Okay, so since we have that, so Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Abstain? Yes, yes, I will.
Commissioner Harker?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes. All right.
Wow.
Motion, is there a nomination for Vice Chair?
Come on, I've already ruffled feathers, someone else.
Whisper with his mask on.
All right, I'll make a motion for Vice Chair of the Murray City Planning Commission as Jake Pearson.
Wait, I'll second.
Wait, what?
For Vice Chair.
Jake is Vice Chair? Who was Chair?
Jeremy.
Oh.
He did, he swapped, he did it the first time.
I was so confused.
Yeah, on his combined motion, he had them in different positions.
Yes, exactly, yeah, I was completely, thank you.
We can go back to the original.
I apologize, I was like, wait, he can't both be Chair and Vice Chair.
Yeah, he did switch it. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Harker to nominate Jeremy Pearson, or sorry, you see, I'm getting this, Jake Pearson as Vice Chair and a second by Commissioner Nay.
Okay, so Commissioner Harker?
Yes.
Commissioner Nay?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes. All right, congratulations.
I just, you actually.
Yeah. Is there any other, any further business, any other things?
Just let us know if you're going to be missing. We already know uh, Commissioner Nae will not be at the next meeting. If you have any conflict, um, let us know as early as possible so that we can make sure that we get everything taken care of. So. Oh, also. Not yet. Um, I think you wanted to talk about that training.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I think I emailed some training opportunity for you. Um, there is one next Tuesday. From six to eight, you can either be in person or you can zoom in on, zoom in. It's at uh, Taylorsville City and it is for um, ground rules handbook on handbook to Utah land and youth law. So it would probably be really good. Um, I believe Craig Craig Hall is, is going to be there, not, yeah, uh, the, he's a former Oms Budsmann is going to be the one that's uh, in charge of it and going to be.
Could you send us an email that describes that?
Yes, yeah. And if you want to watch it on Zoom, you do not have to register, but if you're going to attend in person, then you will need to register.
They give you a fancy book if you go in person.
Yes, and you get the book.
Send the calendar invite to us.
I can resend it if, if you didn't get it. No problem. Yeah, but that's, that's, you know, because we have to have our minimum four hours a year. So that would be two hours right out of the shoots for you. So anyway, that was all.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, I'd like to
Oh.
first thank you for uh, a great year of being Chair of the Murray City Planning Commission.
Thank you.
With some rough meetings.
Yes, agree.
Some COVID, some in-person.
Yeah, oh, yeah. We forgot we started. Totally on Zoom. Yep. Yeah, well, it's been fun to start, started to pass it on.
Make a motion to adjourn.
At 7:02 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned. Hey, thank you, guys.